Okay, ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, good evening and welcome to the January the eighth twenty twenty four meeting of the City of Shore Acres City Council. Is Goodman, will you call the role?
Sir, Mayor.
President.
I'll tell Mayor.
President.
Alderman Alicia.
Present.
Alderman Greason.
President.
Alderman Houston. And Alderman West.
President.
We have a quorum.
Yes, sir.
And the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, welcome. Item three point O, special presentations. Three point one dedication of a bench in the city hall reflection garden to Alderman Neil Moyer. And I've asked for Tim McCown to start this one off with a little preamble.
You know, it's a little bit over a year since we lost Neil. And he was probably one of the nicest guys that I've ever known. And if he taught me one thing, he taught me that it was okay to disagree with each other. And as a city councilman and with this city council that's present, he was an honor to be with, to work for, and to see his sense of humor. And if you ever wanted to fight, he could give you one because he would study for it. Many days and many years ago, there was a Irish saying, there are good ships, there are wood ships. There's ships that sail the sea, but the best ships are friendships, just like Neil Moyer was to me.
Thank you, Jerome. And now it's, uh, it's always good to have friends in life, but Neil's friend was Richard Adams, and I've asked Richard to say a few words about Neil.
No, it's all, it's all good. We, Neil and I knew had, has a good time. He's a great friend in my life. I lost him a little over a year ago. We probably met in this room, I would imagine. We were on council off and on. He was a colorful man. He, he wore Hawaiian shirts to about everything, which I almost wore my Hawaiian shirt tonight, but I didn't, but he would wear those shirts often, and so you couldn't miss Neil. We would enjoy going to get donuts together and visit. Uh, we go to beer breweries and taste the latest beer. He loved, uh, the wine and the beer. Um, we dine, we've dined out with Dolly and my wife Galen and some other friend, David Stoll and his wife. Sometimes we would lots to eat together. Uh, I enjoyed going to his porch at his house and visit on a pretty day with the wind blowing and his cat. Was it Oreo? Was that, that Oreo was sure to bite me every time I pet Oreo. So that was kind of a thing, chatting and cat biting me. Uh, Neil loved race cars, watching race cars, and actually racing race cars. Years ago, he raced a, uh, meet where a BMW went off the road, flipped, crashed, and he and his buddy were in that BMW and he was told me often he was happy to be alive today to tell that tale. And I, and I saw pictures and it's hard to believe. I was back many years before airbags and so forth, and it was an old BMW. He would call me almost daily or text me about, he said, there's a race on TV. Turn, turn to the channel, watch this race. And so we were sharing stories about the races we'd watched together. He loved to do ceramic masks and car art. If you've ever seen them, they're amazing, very colorful. Um, he did quite a few and you couldn't miss them. They were not just black and white. They were very bright colors. That was one of his hobbies. We did a few pedicures together, the four of us, and that's unique. He and Dolly loved their timeshare in Mexico. They would love doing that every year. But that's kind of the personal size with Neil and I. Uh, we would go up to see the races and so forth. Uh, he was very informed and very intelligent, as Jerome alluded to. Uh, he was, I believe, an engineer at a refinery. And, uh, when we'd be together with some of his coworkers that they retired with, they would brag about him and it was obvious when you'd speak to Neil that, uh, he was a cut above. He knew what he was doing. He knew city politics. He knew what the infrastructure needed, uh, in Shore Acres. He studied the ordinances thoroughly. He did his homework. He, he was really good about following through. He loved the city and he made all his decisions based on the citizens and not for himself. Uh, he would think about what's good for the city, not good for Neil. He always thought out of the box. Uh, quite a few were wow moments, wow ideas that were implemented and some were so off the wall that they just didn't make it, but he spoke up. And that's the kind of people you need to just let it out and put it on the table and do what you got. We attended the monthly citizens advisory council, CPAC meetings. Neil always spoke up at those with some great ideas. He studied the city budget constantly. He was always prepared during the budget hearing sessions to answer, uh, citizens' questions. He wouldn't hesitate to go visit citizens and talk with them, uh, about concerns with the city. I miss Neil every day. He left an indelible legacy with Shore Acres and I thank you for honoring Neil Moyer tonight with the bench. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Well, it's time for the unveiling. Obviously, we were hoping to do this outside, uh, but we can't. So Dolly, we have put this, placed this bench in the park in honor of Neil. Where's the spacebar? Let me do it.
I like that picture.
Yeah. That's the bench that we put out in city park and we're gonna give you a
And I can't say any more than what Richard and Jerome had, but, uh, you know, he is missed and he made a mark on this city. Thank you.
Right. Now we'll move on. We'll try anyway. Item four point O, council reports and requests. Does anybody have anything? Not tonight. All right, moving on. Item five point O, public hearings and public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to address council. On items which appear on the agenda, time is limited to five minutes per speaker. Comments are to be directed to the city council and dialogue with the audience is not permitted. Council members are prohibited by law from participating in discussion or deliberation of items not specifically on this agenda. All right, George, anything? George, anything? Ms. Becker, anything?
My name's Mary Becker. I'm at
Just come up to the podium.
I would just, uh, I'm just getting back into coming to city council meetings again, and I would just like to, uh, mention, it'd be nice to have the agenda, uh, a few printed agendas in a little slot, the way it used to be. I know that seems antiquated, but it's hard for me to read it that far, even that far away on that screen. So it would be nice to have just a few printed, put in a little sleeve the way that it used to be. Um, and also, uh, I did not see the announcement of this city council meeting, even though I know it's on the website uh, about, um, having it back on the, uh, marquee. So other than that, I'm, I'm happy. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. City management report. Mr. Harris.
David.
Yeah, Bo.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I, I would like to say something about Neil. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but, uh, I would like to make a brief comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, everybody, or both Jerome and, and Richard Adams summed it up pretty well, but he was just a great guy. Um, yeah, he had that vast sense of humor and was really quick with a witty comment on Facebook. Um, I had to be careful what I posted when I saw him lurking around the Facebook because I knew I was gonna get slammed on it somehow, but uh, he was just a real witty and comical and loved his comments. Uh, when I first learned he was into racing, I was really surprised, uh, but looking back at him, it just seemed fitting. That, you know, he just was that, that type of guy and, and, uh, you, you know, he loved his wife, his family and friends, and he loved this city. And he was always quick to answer the call. Excuse me. He was always quick to answer the call when the city needed him too. Uh, Neil and I had our disagreements on council. We had some, some discussions. He had his beliefs and he held firm to them and, and, uh, you were in for a debate, a strong one. If you, uh, if, if you wanted to, to, to counter him. And while I, I may have disagreed with him on some, I never doubted for one second that he had the best interests of this city and its citizens on his mind. He, uh, this bench is fitting uh, with the Serenity Garden and the stones. They're so aptly labeled. Uh, Neil was a great guy and he has been missed and now will forever be remembered. Thanks.
Thank you, Bo. Should have asked.
I can ask her a question.
Yes, you want to say anything?
No, sure.
All right.
Thank you for sharing Neil with us.
Yes. He loved it. I wanted to mention one thing. Um, when I, Neil and I first got married, thinking about getting married, the one thing I knew was that I would never be bored. And I remember telling myself that I am never gonna be bored and I never was.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. All right. Back to five point O, we're gonna, okay, George.
Probably my question.
State your name.
George Purdue.
And address.
Uh, thirty six twenty two, Miramar.
Thank you.
To Rutgers, Texas. Uh, five point one, we haven't gotten to, right? Yeah.
We, we just went through it, yes.
I thought we did, and why I did not speak at that moment was it said that it had to be on this agenda. And I really didn't see the agenda. I did see it on the
No, it says council or comment on items which appear on the agenda. Limited to, that means you, you, you can't council, council can't talk to you about stuff that's not on the agenda, but you can talk about anything you want to.
Can I, can I go back to five point one then?
Okay, we'll go back to five point one.
I appreciate the courtesy. Thank you very much. Um, I understand that, uh, what we're trying to do down on, uh, Shell Beach now, but I think that we have almost gotten carried away with signs. The, the signs reminisce to me more of entering I-ten freeway than it is, uh, the beautiful city of Shore Acres. We, I think I counted seven signs. Uh, and at the time I counted them, there were probably three of the people were breaking the rules that were on the sign. So I'm not sure anybody's reading those signs. May I suggest in the future that when we put a sign up, that we put it right at the entrance when you're going into the little opening to go into the park, Shell Beach Park, I guess that's what we're gonna call it, uh, Shell Beach Park, and it would be the rules of the park. Usually when you go into like a state park or someplace, you usually have the rules of the park. Nice little pretty sign and it's posted there. It says, you know, no of this, none of this, and none of this, no guns, no whatever it is they decide to do. And we now have so many things on those signs. I look out my window and it's, I, I admit that it shouldn't be a selfish situation, but it does look very similar to entering one of the exits or entrances to the I-ten freeway corridor. There are seven signs that glow back at me and I don't think anybody's reading the sign. So I know we spent a lot of money putting signs up, but, uh, I would like somebody to take a look back at the sign and, and get a respectable looking sign that respects the neighborhood. At the same time, when you enter the park, they, they know the rules. So the people see the rules because I even had one guy that was there and he said, oh, I didn't even see that sign. It's, it's, it's higher than most people are. So there is an issue there. I would like for y'all to take a look at it. I, I don't expect anything to happen at this point on it, but I would like to bring it to everybody's attention. I think it's not really becoming of the neighborhood. Uh, the second thing that I'd like to say, and then I will be within my five minutes, I hope, is, um, that any major improvements or any things that are done in Shore Acres, I, I really think it's only fair and neighborly to, to tell the neighbors and the people that are being affected or put a sign up or post a sign of some kind or another, that we're getting ready to put a parking lot in front of your house or, or something along that line. Uh, or maybe we're gonna cut off this street or, or whatever. And here's a third thing I have, is I understand that there's some new things that are gonna be done, which is kind of like point three of this whole thing, that there's some things that we're gonna do with tax dollars of fixing highway, uh, Bayway or some different parts of the city. And I was thinking that it might be good to have some feedback from the people that live on those streets and that have been involved with those streets and know certain issues, like the sewer system should be out, outside of the center of the, of the street. So if we do build a nice, beautiful street again, that the street isn't having to be torn up immediately because somebody put a house there and they have to dig the street up and then we got another patched street. And it seems like that has happened several times and there should be some kind of forethought into, uh, the streets. But of course, I know that's y'all's job, so I'm stepping into it, but I'm still seeing it as a citizen living in Shore Acres. I like it to be a beautiful place. I thank y'all very much.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, item six point O, and we'll start with the city manager's report. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just read this off, uh, in restricted debt. We have thirty two thousand four hundred sixty one dollars thirty two cents. The unused portion of the wastewater project, it's fifty three thousand nine hundred thirty seven dollars and eight cents. Come back to that in just a second. A utility deposit fund, ninety three thousand one hundred twenty five dollars eleven cents. The road repair, which is tax pool funds, is at three hundred one thousand seven hundred twenty three dollars fifty nine cents. COVID grant fund remaining are thirty five thousand three hundred ninety two dollars and thirty seven cents. Park pavilion improvements, uh, remaining is twenty nine thousand eight hundred seventy three dollars fourteen cents. SIF funds five thousand six hundred twenty seven dollars and eighty two cents for a total of five hundred fifty two thousand one hundred forty one dollars and fifteen cents. Only unencumbered funds, the general fund checking were two hundred seventy three thousand one hundred thirty seven dollars and fifteen cents. Utility checking, two hundred sixty thousand six hundred fifty one dollars and thirty cents. And in the encumbered funds, tax pool, the mayor's gonna come back to this in a second, I believe, so I'll just read it. One million about seven thousand eight hundred seventy three thousand forty four cents for a total of one million five hundred forty one thousand six hundred sixty one dollars and eighty nine cents.
All right, yeah, I want to, uh, Jerome, you see a number on there? That's good. Ms. Ramos? I cannot believe you guys. When Jerome and Fleish and I started, we had about two hundred and sixty three thousand dollars in reserves. That was it. Today, we're at a million seven thousand. Remember that, Fleish?
Yes.
I can't believe you didn't get that.
I'm used to seeing the numbers go up from many moons ago, you know?
And so I think that's a remarkable achievement for the, the council, so. I, I wanted to highlight that. Mr. Harrison, go ahead.
Certainly a milestone. Any questions? Other than me bragging on you?
All right, moving on to item six point two, the monthly police department report. All right. Uh, municipal court first. Sir, let's leave the municipal court real quick, a recap. Okay, the reason I'm doing this, as, as we talked about last month, is so we don't have what happened last year where municipal court just fell into arrears because we never had court, you know, in COVID years and all that. So we are making a major dent in catching up. Um, a new court clerk, Diane Stokes and, uh, and of course Ms. Anderson have worked hard on, uh, catching up and, and having court. We're having court regularly again. We'll have it, uh, this month on the eighteenth, I believe. And so what we, we don't wanna make a profit, but we have to break even because, you know, we're already spending so much money on the police and, and all that. So we're, we're trying to break even. And so right now we're, we're ahead of that. That'll, that'll, as those expenses come up, that'll, that'll catch up, but, but right now we're doing okay. And so we're gonna track that all year long. All right, now we'll move on to the police report.
And, and I will add, Mayor, that we have, uh, uh, we have one court date a month that we assign for. In the perfect world, we write citations for about sixty days out at the most. Right now, we're writing them for about a hundred and twenty days out because we're so busy. Working a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic on one forty six, a lot of traffic in the city. So that's what you see, those numbers, that, that they continue to grow. Uh, we're thinking about either doing a second court or, uh, just trying some way to, to, uh, to even that out. Sometimes we've been in court for almost four hours. That's a long time sitting in court. We do have two jury trials this month. We went five years without a jury trial. We had one a few weeks, a couple of months ago and we've got two coming up this month. So we're, we're back in full action on, on court now. Uh, you got, you have the police report in front of you. You'll, you'll see there's nothing that I can think of. There's nothing remarkable about the report. We continued during the holidays. Have a lot of house watches when people go on vacations, go out of town. Uh, Houston Yacht Club patrols and San Jacinto College patrols stay very consistent throughout the months because each officer is responsible for so many patrols of shift, so those don't change. Total citations, uh, usually down a little bit in November and December. Uh, whether we like it or not, they'll go up starting in January, probably just unless we have bad weather and cold. Uh, just because officers are out and about more, uh, after the holidays. I did run a couple of reports because I thought you might ask. In looking at, uh, asking a report to run a report and tell us any fireworks complaints we had. Didn't have any fireworks complaints. We did have a couple of calls about possible gunshots in the area of Windleaf and Bayou Forest. It was unfounded or undetermined whether it was gunshots or or fireworks. Uh, there was, there was nothing we found to it, loud music. And that's all we had. We had nothing on New Year's Eve, which really surprised me as far as calls for service.
So what you're saying is all those, uh, complaints on Facebook and Nextdoor, people need to call dispatch like we continually say.
That's the only way we're gonna go over there, right? No, I, I did come into the city New Year, New Year's Eve from about eight fifteen till about ten thirty. And I didn't hear one firework from our city that I could tell. I heard some in Bay Colony. I heard some north, but I have no doubt there were probably some. I didn't hear.
I can tell you our neighborhood was pretty quiet for once.
Yeah, I could hear in Bay Colony.
And, uh, we did, we, we did have calls for service at Shell Beach for fishing, which we responded to and asked people to leave. We've obviously gonna ask people to leave before we do anything else, and they've, they've complied and left, uh, when we explained that most of them, you know, didn't see the signs, but the problem with the signs is you can get into that park from a hundred different places. It, it'd be nice if everybody was funneling through one place and we put all the signs there, but unfortunately they could crawl over tables and walk in at any place, so.
Yeah, I think y'all are doing a great job down there.
Thank you. Uh, and that's for the police report. That's all I have.
Mr. McCown, Mayor Potem? Ms. Ramos?
I'm there.
Mr. Greason?
Nothing.
Mr. Bell?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
All right, moving on to item six point three, the public works report.
A public works report is, is kind of steady too. We continue to repair a few leaks, but they're down uh, some months. I think we had seventeen or maybe more. Now we're down to four and I don't think any of them were major as far as like having to turn water off and repair, which is really nice after the summer we had. Uh, we, uh, had a repair to make in the plant and we've had a, uh, a, a few, what we call uh, endpoints, which is the part that's mounted in the top of the meter box that have to be replaced because they get damaged. So right now the Badger meters uh, warranted a bunch of those, but we've been, we've been really fortunate, but a typical month of public works probably in December.
All right, any questions from council? Mr. Greason?
Mr. Harrison, you said that you were gonna get back to the unused wastewater big funds, that you'd get back to that. Is that something you're gonna cover now?
Yeah, that's, I was about to go to that because we do have a little bit of money left in the COVID funds. Uh, it, it's left on here because we haven't paid the invoice yet, but I think we've been invoiced for almost all of it now. We did two, we did two things with COVID money. We had the emergency repairs on Oakdale, a sewer. That was about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Everything else we tied up in, um, in improving our water lines in the area of Meadowland, Fairfield and Byway back towards the water, some lines that we were repairing, if not monthly, weekly. I, I, I believe that, that some yards we were repairing almost weekly.
So we finished just about everything that we have money for of the water lines.
Yes, sir.
And are you, where you could, what percent of that of the city is that? I mean?
Well, we replaced, I mean, as you know, um, a lot of six inch, four inch, three inch, we, we, we've done a lot. I don't know that, I don't, I could have the numbers for you. That's not complicated, but um, we do have a little bit of a project left on the water distribution line over here. It, it should have been finished a year ago. It, it hasn't because of some conflicts with, with metering, so there's still some money left in the budget to pay that final bill too. So we have just a, a handful of money left for that and then what we owe, uh, uh, obviously I, you owe for the COVID funds. But I, if you'd like the number, I can get you the linear feed of what we've done.
Yeah, next, uh, next meeting, maybe you could have, uh, where we stand as far as what percent of the city we've got completed now.
Mr. Harrison, why don't we have, uh, Mr. Lackey come and, and just recap the entire project from, from, from all the projects that we did?
I think that's a great idea.
Uh, Mr. Bell, anything?
Uh, no, thank you.
Ms. Ramos?
No.
No, forget it. All right, moving on. I have seven point O business, item seven point one minutes. Ms. Goodman has prepared the minutes. Do I have a motion to, uh, consider?
Question.
A motion from Ms. Ramos. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Greason? You've had an opportunity to review the minutes. Any questions on them? Any, uh, problems, changes? Very none. We'll call for vote. All those in favor say aye. And all those opposed. The passage unanimously. Moving on, item seven point two. Discussion of loose animals brought by Mr. Bell. Do I have a motion to discuss? Motion. Have a motion from Mr. McCown. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Ms. Ramos. Mr. Bell?
Okay. Can I sit here when we just and podium?
What's that?
Let me sit here or stand up?
Either way.
It doesn't matter. Okay. Um, I'd like to share an incident that occurred recently around the thirty three hundred block of Sunrise where Sunrise meets Fairfield. Involves an older couple that I know that lives down Meadowland. And I told her that, uh, I would discuss this at the meeting just to make it public so everybody's aware of it. So I'm doing this really for her. Um, her husband was taking her little dog for a walk um, on December the twenty eighth. Yes, he was on a leash, little dog. Um, and, excuse me, when he and his little dog were attacked by two larger dogs near their home. He said it was about a block, about half a block. So. His wife posted the story on Nextdoor the next day. If you're not familiar with Nextdoor, it's a, a public message board where people in different communities can post questions or events that occur in their town or their area. And, uh, I like to read what she said. This is a quote from, uh, the lady. The people who left their dogs out run free on the thirty-three hundred block of Sunrise tonight. My husband just came in winded and upset. Did your dogs trying to attack him and our little dog while they were doing their nightly walk? She says elderly people have health conditions, shouldn't have to defend themselves like he did tonight. I went by and talked to her and looked at the dog, everything. And, uh, I know these people personally. They're really, really nice people and the little dog was biggest part of their life, probably. And the little dog's fine. The woman was still pretty shook up. And when I told her I was going to discuss this at the meeting, she kind of hesitated until I told her we wouldn't bring up her name. So no names here. This post generated fifty-eight comments and ninety-three reactions. And that's quite a bit for, uh, Nextdoor, if you ever read Nextdoor. And, uh, these incidents really dropped off over time. They used to be pretty prevalent and they've dropped off almost nothing. But it just shows that it can still occur anywhere, anytime to anybody. And, uh, I just want to remind people that walk their pets, walk at night, ride their bicycles. Um, especially after dark, to be aware of their surroundings. And, uh, avoid situations that don't look safe to them. So I have to say, if anybody had a comment, please feel free.
Um, Mr. Harrison?
Sir?
We have any reports? Loose animals in December?
We had three reports. Uh, one was on, uh, two abused dogs, which we investigated and they were, they had food, water and shelter. So that was a, um, it was still a call for service, but it was, uh, nothing criminal or anything like that. We had one found dog and we had two dogs at large, so a total of three calls for the month of December. And only, only one of those was, was loose dog.
When we, uh, when we find dogs that are loose and, uh, we find the owners that have those, can we, uh, check, make sure that they have proper fencing to keep those dogs in? Do we do that normally?
Yes, we, we do. And normally, you know, normally we find most cases where we're able to look. I mean, many times we can't locate the owners because either they're from Shady River or they're not, they're not even from here. But when we do, uh, we'll go by and look and most of the time it's a fence that just, uh, is, is, needs to be repaired. And most of the time the people repair the fence and it's a one-time thing. There's been a couple of instances, instances where, uh, the same one has become a nuisance. There's been more than two, more than two or three calls and we've written citations in those. Yes, sir.
So, uh, apparently she didn't write a report or didn't call the police or anything. Is that, is that right?
That's true, but I did talk with her.
Oh, you did?
I did talk to her and she told me she purposely did not report it, that she didn't feel like it needed to be. But anyway.
Well, I, I didn't ask her that when I talked to her.
No, I, when I, when I saw that, it was important to me to make sure that I had the whole story. And I want to make sure she knew that, hey, on these, you really need to call us and let us know. Because he may have got away with the next person, you know, may not be that much.
Well, I appreciate you doing that.
Yes, sir.
Real nice people.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCown, anything?
No, sir.
Ms. Ramos?
No.
Mr. Greason?
Uh, I was just trying to think of any other way. Uh, looks like we are doing about everything we can. But we do need the citizens to, if they do have an incident, especially if one gets bit. Uh, uh, my granddaughter was in the yard riding her scooter and the dogs from the second house up right there on Forest uh, got out because he was repairing his fence, getting it repaired. And, uh, come up and bit her right in the back of the leg. Of course, we reported that, but, uh, I was just lucky that, uh, we knew where the dogs came from and was able to get, uh, rabies, uh, shot, uh, information and things like that. So, uh, there's real danger that if you have a dog that's strayed out there, you can't find him. You don't know if you're going to take rabies shots or not.
And if somebody's actually been a whole, a whole nother thing kicked, saying there's some things that we have to do them or we don't have a choice. And obviously, uh, quarantining until we can figure those things out. So if somebody's actually bet, they really don't have a choice on whether they want to report it or not, if we find out about it.
Yeah. We just want to make sure that everybody does so that we can identify the problems. And, uh, that's all that matters.
Okay. Moving on. I have seven point three. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh one oh one. An ordinance of the city of Shore Acres, Texas, providing that a general municipal election be held on May fourth, twenty twenty-four for the purpose of electing the mayor and two alderpersons, providing the form of the ballot for such election, directing the notice of such election, providing details relating to the holding of such elections. Do you have a motion to consider?
Motion.
Have a motion from Mr. McCown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Bell? This is, uh, our annual election coming up and we have to pass an ordinance to, uh, to call the election. And, um, the, uh, as, as stated, it's the mayor and, and two members of council. And this particular one would be the positions that Mr., uh, Greason and Mr. Bell are currently holding. And the, uh, first day of filing is January the eighteenth and, or, and the, the, the last day of filing is February the seventeenth. All that information's on the city website. Do you have any questions? All of the papers say aye.
Okay.
All right, moving on to item seven point four. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh one oh two. An ordinance amending the city code of Shore Acres relating to use of golf carts on public streets or highways within the city limits, containing a severability clause, providing for the publication of the caption hereof, making various findings and provisions relating to the subject, finding compliance with the open meetings law and providing an effective date hereof. Do you have a motion to consider?
Motion.
Have a motion from Mr. McCown. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is that?
Oh.
Mr. Greason, have a second from Mr. Greason. Okay, this is Ms. Ramos's, uh, item?
Um, I just wanted us to be up to date with the state laws where the age is actually sixteen and not fourteen. Um, with summer coming up, you know, I wanted it set in stone to where if there was any issues that you can't question our code.
Yeah, when Ms. Ramos brought this up, uh, I started researching the, uh, actually it was, she just brought up, we got some problems with golf carts in the city. There are, uh, apparently young, young children out very, very late at night on golf carts. And so we wanted to just sort of review it and see where we stood. The first thing that stood out was that our code does not match state law protocol. And so in researching this, and in your packet, you will find our complete current code and the attorney general's opinion about the operation of golf carts. But it turns out that you have to have a driver's license or operating permit before you can drive a golf cart. Our current code said you had to be only fourteen, which does not meet the state requirement for a operating license. So we had to correct that. There's no question about that. So that's the only changes we're going to see tonight. Um, that's, that's it. Item, uh.
To clarify this, just, I'm reading it and I think I.
Mr. Purdue?
Okay.
Um, so golf carts shall not be driven or operated by a person under the age of, and we're scratching out fourteen and inserting sixteen without the direct supervision of a twenty-one-year-old or older passenger. That is state law. An L, no person shall allow or permit the golf cart under their control to be driven or operated by a person under the age of, and we're scratching out fourteen and changing that to sixteen, without the direct supervision of a twenty-one-year-old or older passenger. And you will note that a sixteen-year-old licensed driver cannot let his twelve-year-old sister drive the golf cart. It has to be a twenty-one-year-old. And if you look at this law, no person shall allow or permit a golf cart under their control. That means that if this happens, the citation will go to the owner of the golf cart as well as the juvenile of the golf cart. Now, other provisions of the code that are in there and that are still legal, that are probably not being followed, are that the golf carts have to be manufactured to be used on a golf course. Many of the carts in our city are not manufactured to use on a golf course. Utility vehicles are not allowed on public highways. Uh, Mr. Harrison, do you have any thoughts on that? Yeah, this is a very tricky subject for, for Troy, being, uh, the, uh, head of our police department.
You know, in the last several years, they've come, you come out with all kinds of different utility vehicles and, uh, it's a conflict every time something's out there. But just like the mayor said, if it's not adapted, if it's not made and constructed to carry two people and two sets of golf clubs, it's really not a golf cart. Now, there are people movers that are the same thing that have maybe six people. So what we're watching for is we're watching for these things like these side by sides. They're not golf carts. They were never intended to be golf carts. And we're, we have been for months and months trying to keep those off. I was even hesitant, uh, to let them ride in the, uh, in the Christmas parade. Because you let that start and it gets out of hand. But we'll continue. We've already talked as a group of police officers. And, uh, they're, all the officers are aware of this and we're going to try to make sure we've got, uh, some children riding some over here back behind us. And I think we've already stopped them by talking to their parents. But this ordinance, just cleaning it up, will certainly help us.
Yeah, it basically just, uh, just, obviously we're not golf cart Nazis in this city. That should be clear. Um, but what it does do is if we do happen to find those, uh, juveniles, uh, that are causing problems, that the, the officers have the correct city code to apply. And that when they, or if they write a citation, the judge does not throw it out because our city code is not correct. And so again, the only ordinance changes that you are making tonight are the two age changes. Now, we can talk about future ordinance changes as we go if you wish or anything like that. But Ms. Ramos just wanted to correct the code to make it up, uh, to comply with state law.
We're, we're saying, uh, Mr. Ray, that, uh, they have to be sixteen years old, but they also have to have a, a valid driver.
You have to have a valid.
That doesn't say that on that, so.
Mr. Purdue?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, they have to have a valid permit. You know, and, and we, we don't need to say that. What we need to do is make sure it complies with state law. The officers will, will, will enforce them. They know that. Now, the, if the children are seventeen and don't have a driver's license, then they'll, they're, they'll be cited. And they also have to have insurance on the golf cart. They're, they're, it's just like driving a car.
Okay, now, one other thing I noticed that it says the registration with the city of La Porte for golf courts is, uh, it's recognized by the city of Shore Acres. But the city of Shore Acres, uh, register the golf carts?
It's, it's a registration in the curious form where they have a checklist and they go through and just make sure it has a, a, a slow moving placard and the, and the lights and, and the mirror. So they give their residents a sticker to put on their golf cart when they registered. And all that's saying is if they have that sticker, we recognize that and, and we know they're following the laws or the, the, their ordinance. We do not do that. We, we do not give a sticker. We don't have golf cart inspections.
Sure, Mr. Harrison has brought up that he would like to explore that. And we've talked about it and, uh, perhaps at some future council meeting, Mr. Harrison will have a, a presentation for you. Uh, but at this point, we do not register golf carts. Um, the reason for registration has to do more with making sure they have liability insurance and making sure the safety inspections that Troy just mentioned. And so if, if we want to do that, then that will have to be a future ordinance, uh, change and a, and a, a complete system that, that Mr. Harrison will have to come up with.
And, and you'll notice that La Porte, if you have it in there, they, they make them, they make you fill out everybody that's going to operate that golf cart and puts their names in also. That would be constant upkeep if we were to adopt something like that. And that's, that's intimidating to me as, as small as we are.
Wes?
Hello, when I read this the other day, when I read the issue about, uh, carrying liability insurance, I, I understood that to be a La Porte requirement.
State law.
No, so that's a state requirement. So is that required in Shore Acres now?
Sure. It's a state require, yes.
I don't know if I know anybody that's carrying.
I know. I know. If you are, if you operate a cart manufactured for a golf course on the city streets, which is legal, you have to have a driver's license, you have to have, um, placards and you have to have liability insurance. That's state law.
Well, we've talked about it before and, and apparently it's, it's pretty inexpensive to carry.
I don't, I don't know. I don't have.
Like less than a hundred dollars, I heard someone. Just add on to one of your, your existing policies. But I don't, I can't name a person that has. I have, it's about a hundred and fifty-five, actually.
A hundred and thirty-five?
Yeah, they fill me every six.
Mr. Purdue?
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, but thank you.
First of that.
All right.
Well, then I have.
All right, all those in favor of adopting ordinance change as presented, say aye?
Aye.
And the measure passes unanimously. Moving on to ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh one oh three. An ordinance amending this code of the city of Shore Acres, allowing alderpersons to attend council meetings remotely, containing a severability clause, providing for the relocation of caption hereof, making various findings and provisions relating to the subject and finding compliance with the open meetings law and providing an effective date hereof. Do I have a motion to consider?
Motion.
A motion from Mr. McCown. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Ms. Ramos. Uh, several of you have, uh, voiced your opinion that you wish to allow remote attendance at council meetings like we did under the emergency order for COVID. Um, I was reluctant to, to, to do that until we got our communication system in. And as you can see, it's working and working very well. Um, so what this ordinance change, it adds section seven, two seventy, it adds a section and it changes the, the reserve section. If you see it, it strikes out seventy and the reserve starts at seventy-one now. So the, the change will be remote meeting attendance. Council members may attend meetings remotely if said meeting has been noticed in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. A council member desiring to attend remotely shall notify the presiding officer before noon of the day the meeting is scheduled to occur. The council member will have the same opportunity to interact during the meeting as they would have if they were physically present. The presiding officer is either the mayor or the mayor pro town. And of course, that's it. So that's, that's by state law. And so that's what this does. If you are in favor of it, great. If you're not, fine too. But I know that a couple of you had expressed interest, so we researched it. Uh, the city attorney approved it, all that stuff. Mr. McCown, anything?
I think this is probably one of the smartest moves we can do for our city because if we don't have a quorum because of personal families or issues or health, you can pick up a phone and call. We can have our quorum and continue our meeting and continue to keep the city in a functioning mode. I think that, uh, if we went the other way, it would be shameful just, but that's my, my two cents and another nickel to go with it.
Ms. Ramos?
Um, I agree with Jerome and also with jobs that have you travel, it's kind of difficult to, you know, be here for two, three meetings in a row when work, you know, kind of conflict. So I see this as a good thing.
Mr. Greason?
Yeah, I agree with it.
And Mr. Bell?
Yeah, uh, Mr. McCown makes a good point about the, uh, quorum issue. It might keep you from, uh, to the board of meeting.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And the motion passes as presented. Moving on to item eight point oh, oh, seven point or here, seven point four. Seven point six on this thing, uh, second regular meeting. The second regular meeting of, uh, council, uh, it would be on the twenty what? Twenty-second? Twenty-second? If you. 22nd, if you choose to have one. Does anyone see a need? Mr. Harrison?
No, sir.
Ms. Goodman? Do you see any? No? Okay, hearing none, that motion died, that agenda item dies for lack of. At 8.0 adjourned, but all of the favor of being adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Hold on.
Let's make a motion.
I need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Ms. Ramos. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Greason. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned as of 6:50 PM. Thank you, guys, for coming out.